All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven oh four. Can we please stand for a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
As we aspire on the United States of America and to republi- for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. All right, any other correspondence forward?
There are no correspondence.
There is no correspondence forward, it's too early in the season. So we're gonna jump right to combination of good news. In summertime, there's probably not a tremendous amount of that either, but...
The student council has been meeting a few times already before the school starts and we have our new theme this year, which is aspire to inspire. And we really wanna like reach out and make a very friendly environment here at the school. So we already have plans to have everybody posted at the doors, greeting everyone as they come in on the first day, and we have some activities planned as well.
Interesting. Any other combinations, good news? I know the elementary teachers got their letters out to all their students, I saw.
Yep, we did. I haven't had a chance to speak with the principals, but I'm sure they wouldn't mind my saying that we're excited to start the new school year. Um, we have a new reading program, which we're all very excited about. We actually had training on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. So we went through that and we're just excited. We're ready.
Excellent. Any other combinations, good news? Jenny?
I've read a lot in the paper this summer about our baseball teams at Goss Town at the, um, Little League and, um, Babe Ruth level. And kudos to them for having some great seasons.
Yeah, I do. We got a cricket. All right, we're gonna, before we jump into public comment, I should wanna, I did wanna mention, we do have a couple of items that we're gonna change the order in the agenda. One of the items that I'm actually gonna be moving into non-public is the change in school assignment requests. There are several requests for school assignment changes, and a couple of them are actually a little sensitive in nature, so I'm actually gonna push those to the end when we do our non-public, so the parents can talk freely about their request, why they wanna do that. So I just wanted you to know that we are gonna move that a little bit later in the meeting. And we're gonna move up the Glen Lake parking issue right after we do a public comment. Public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Sue, did you have something in the combinations?
Minutes.
Right, I missed that. We actually need a motion to approve the minutes of six twenty-one, two thousand and ten, which was a mea- um, a school board meeting.
I'll move those as presented.
Jenny seconded it. Um, any amendments on those?
There's just, um, one small amendment on the public comments section. The question was actually reducing the number of classes from six third grade classes to five fourth grade instead of five to four. Minor detail, but...
Okay, make that amendment. Any other, uh, changes or corrections? All right, all in favor of the motion? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, eight, zero, zero, motion passes. We actually have one, excuse the absence, Hank Boyle tonight, on that. And then the other one, we have to approve the minutes of, of eight thirty.
No, six thirty.
Uh, six thirty-ten, um, which was actually the, uh, oil tank issue at Mountain View Middle School. We were discussing what we were gonna do for the repair on it. So do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
By Kent, seconded by Sue. Any amendments, corrections on the minutes for six thirty? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, against, abstaining. Seven, zero, one, one abstention. That was Laurie. And then finally, we had our public hearing on July nineteenth, um, for the refinancing of the bond, um, here at the high school, for the remodeling that we did. Have a motion to approve the minutes of July nineteenth for the hearing. By Diane, seconded by Jenny. Any amendments, corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes of July nineteenth? And that passes unanimously, eight, zero, zero. All right, now we can go to public comment. Any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we're actually gonna jump right into something under new business, 'cause we have some people here to discuss it with us, is the Glen Lake parking. As you know, the selectmen have made the decision along, and correct me chief if I'm wrong, um, along the public parking spots along the lake, with the exception of the ones for the, uh, boat ramp, for the boat parking, they're gonna, from June fifteenth through Labor Day, gonna require that to be for residential parking only, and you have to have your residential parking sticker, the one that you use for the DPW, visible on the vehicle. Obviously, that would then cause people who are coming from outside the community or other areas to probably inundate our parking lot at Glen Lake. So the selectmen were hoping, and I, I think it was a good idea, was hoping that we would be able to do the same thing, parking ban from June fifteenth through Labor Day, requiring that it be residential parking only, and that the, uh, town resident sticker has to be visible in the vehicle. So this way the police can actually enforce parking there, try to help us control people parking on the lawn, and hopefully help cut down the littering that we had from people using, uh, the lake during the hot summer season.
And if I can, I know Leslie's here as well, and she witnessed some of the disturbances at the parking lot, but if I can, on the, on the worst weekends, the, the first few weekends of the summer, um, we had, the parking lots were full, we had people parking on the lawn in the fire zones. The garbage that we had to pick up on Monday morning was amazing. Um, and that happened probably three or four weekends in a row, when we had that really hot weather. People were picnicking on the lawn as if it was a park. It was really, um, difficult, and knowing, as you know, we have a part-time custodian at Glen Lake, and so for him to have spent, you know, upwards of two hours cleaning up garbage, um, bags of garbage, um, is a lot for our staff to take on, and, um, so it is something that I think I support, um, because it will, it doesn't limit the residents from using the building, or the parking lot, or the playground. What it does is it reduces the out-of-town people from parking there and littering and putting garbage there.
You know, obviously, they're trying to control the, uh, the overcrowding at Glen Lake during the summer season.
And if I may, that's one of the main concerns, is the seventeen parking spaces that are there now for Glen Lake waterfront, in addition to the, I think it's eight trailer lots, were mapped out, I want to say seven or eight years ago now, under a study that said this is the amount of people that the lake, or the waterfront can handle in that area. Since that time, the schools opened, and we're now bringing in a lot of additional parking, not controlled parking, and all the people are just basically traveling right across the road, we have no crosswalks there, anything like that. And it's also, it's not just a littering problem. Understand that the littering is a huge problem, but it's also a safety concern of ours, not only for the people crossing the road, it's the use of the lake, the waterfront, and also the help of the children going to school. Dirty diapers, I counted four one day in the parking lot, and the same is at the beach as well, so it is a health issue as well.
If I could just chime in, we have fifty-three parking spots there, so what was happening over the summer, everything by the lake was filling, and we could have at least thirty, thirty-five cars, which would be in excess to what the lakefront can handle there.
Is the capacity at the, at the beach and the area hasn't changed since the guidelines were set seven or eight years ago?
Correct.
And the parking spaces that are available, that were there before the school were, were designed to meet that capacity?
Correct.
So if you eliminate the school as a parking area, um, then you have a, a beach that serves the capacity based upon the available parking?
Correct, a more manageable number of people that would use the beach.
So from, from a, from a facility standpoint and from a safety standpoint, what is the best solution?
Again, it...
Not, not the politically expedient solution, but, but the best, but I, I mean, I'm listening to the things that you've said, and I think I get 'em all, and it seems to me that the solution isn't what we're doing.
Well, I would disagree.
Okay.
Our concern is, you still have a playground there, the kids use it, the residents use it, and should be able to use it. That's not me, for me to say, not for you folks to say, but that's my belief.
That's the thing, that we keep it open.
In addition, you have, during the summer, you have, um, summer school. So you have cars coming and going. For us to be able to monitor every car, well, are you going into the school for summer school, or are you... So trying to meet that somewhere in between, as far as saying, okay, let's just make it residence, because we find for the most part, residents will use just those spots, and not much more than that. We don't have an overabundance of residents using that lake.
No, I can't get in.
And remember our policy that we just, that we intentionally created when we, uh, did the remodeling of the, well, when the PFT at Bartlett did the new playground, and we opened the playground at Glen Lake, was that we weren't gonna close those playgrounds off, we're gonna allow for public use during daylight hours.
Yeah, people do use them.
I do.
Jenny, then we'll go to Sue.
Um, is it an issue during summer school to be having summer people park there that are going to the lake?
Yeah, we've made it, we've made it so that they can't park there during school hours, so when school's in session, and we actually post-ited it on the board. When we were having the problems where people were, we posted on the board when school was open, so that we could hopefully eliminate some of that. And I think people were pretty good about when school was in session.
The summer program, everybody's gone by eleven-thirty, so most of your lategoers, they're just arriving at that point, so it wasn't a problem.
And do we have a liability issue with people crossing the road, going to the lake, and, you know, I parked in the school facility, and I'm going over to the lake, and, you know, is there any liability for us as far as those kinds of things go?
I don't, I don't, I don't think the district...
Yeah, I don't think the district has any control over the public roadway, um, and
if, if we are, if we don't control that, which is the hazard...
Yeah.
I don't think that's a giant issue. I mean, if, if, somebody might point at the town generally and say, you're creating a hazard here because you're putting parking on one side and a, an attractive nuisance on the other, but...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It still doesn't solve the problem of somebody not looking left and looking right before they come.
Well, I would just hate to say, okay, allow the parking there, and then have us be in a jam later on, because...
I don't think we could avoid that jam.
We're responsible.
If, if somebody were to be hurt badly enough, um, we, we would never be able to avoid that.
Chief?
At this point, by not restricting it, you're allowing it anyways?
Right.
So you're still, and, um, I remember Leslie saw thirty-something cars there, I saw every spot filled, and then parked around the back in the fire lane one day. So it's that amount of people, so if we can restrict it and lower it down, it's gonna restrict the exposure liability as well.
How can you keep the fire lanes open, so the people are not...
Need to pass an ordinance for that. Townwide.
Yeah.
When, when you were seeing it full, do you notice how many were Goss Town residents as opposed to others?
I have instructed my officers, we are not going to run plates and find out who lives where. That's not the proper thing to do.
So we don't really know if this will cut it down?
Sue, you got something you wanna add to it?
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of, um, restricting the parking o- over there to residents. I mean, when we built that school and folks were going around making presentations around town, that point was made, you could park at the school and go to Glen Lake. So I, I think we have to, with our own residents, make sure that that continues to be allowed. And I like the idea of using the DPW stickers to identify residents and non-residents.
Any other questions from the board? Now, we were looking, now, we have to decide what motion we wanna make, but do we wanna restrict it from June fifteenth through Labor Day, 'cause I believe that's what the town is gonna restrict it, and that's what you're gonna enforce.
Correct, that's what our aim is to do. The ordinance still has to be written, but I've been passed with writing.
Once we pass a motion, the town writes an ordinance, then it's enforceable. Mm-hmm.
And the question will be, right, 'cause, let me clarify the, oh, I'm sorry, Philip, go ahead.
Can, can our action, I mean, let, let's say it makes more sense for us to do something like end of school, open of school. Um, and, and does, is that going to have a negative impact on any proposed ordinance, or does it not make any difference to you?
For continuity?
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
To Labor Day, this year was the exception, as far as the heat showing up early, but the fifteenth is a reasonable time, the kids are now getting out of school after fifteen, then we can deal with the beach up until Labor Day.
Okay.
And that way, the end of school, the end of school when, the end of school for winter break, because then if you have people parking there at winter break, that's the end of school in some people's minds, where it's narrowly...
We, we'd make it clear what the end of school was. We wouldn't miss that one.
Trust me, I hear all the angles.
Well, we'd, we'd, we'd make sure that we cut off the angle, so when you answered the question.
I have a question, what would be the, what would be the estimated fine for parking there without, um...
Presently, it's twenty-five dollars, um, per violation at Glen Lake Beach.
And let's say, a resident parks, and they don't have a visible sticker, how do you handle that normally?
They would be in violation without a visible sticker.
Okay.
Um, and again, we would do a grace period, and I have the option to review the, the ticket at the time, and if in fact they are, they may get one chance to go get your sticker and, you know, we'll take it back, however, next time around.
That makes sense.
So give her some discretion.
Okay, excellent.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, for summer program, how would we identify our staff that are working the program and parking in the lot?
Maybe give them a little staff sticker, sticker to put on their car or in their windshield or something, help identify them?
I'll make a motion that we restrict, um, non-resident parking at Glen Lake School from June fifteenth to after Labor Day.
Can we actually change the motion to say to...
I don't, I'm trying to figure out how to word this.
Or if I, if I, if I could change, ask you to change the wording to, we are gonna only allow resident parking at Glen Lake Park School from June fifteenth through Labor Day, would that be fine?
That works too, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Philip. Any questions or further discussions?
Do we need to throw in the exception for staff?
No, I don't think we need to necessarily put that in there.
Make staff get to work there no matter what.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? That passes unanimously, eight, zero, zero. Now the selectmen can do their part, and by next summer, hopefully, we can help control some of the population overrun over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Leslie.
Keith, could I ask a question of him before he leaves? Um, the roundabout.
I hit him up before you came in, Jenny.
I know today I was talking to somebody who said the traffic was backed up to the Sunoco station, and I'm just wondering, that was before school started. Um, I'm wondering, is there going to be a police presence to kinda help direct traffic in the morning and the afternoon, until the kids and the adults get kinda used to that situation?
There will be a police presence, as they're always at the, at the start of school. Will we be in the roundabout directing traffic? No. I'm gonna try to be politically correct here, so you have to bear with me. It is a DOT job, okay? And we hear about officers working details all the time, it is a Department of Transportation job, and it's funded through ARA grants, okay? The DOT regulates traffic control, they have control on who will be assigned. They have chosen not to employ police officers at that intersection.
Were, were they gonna employ anybody, or...
The flaggers that are presently there.
Oh, my God.
But that's during the construction process.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
But Jenny, they did, they did have stop and go traffic.
It's our understanding that they're saying they're going to be done by the start of school, and the crosswalks will be in.
That's my understanding, I will be affirming that tomorrow morning, um, first thing, to make sure we have crosswalks. Again, we will have officers, myself included, out there, uh, starting into school the first couple days, um, at each and every school.
But, but in the parking lot here?
I will have my SRO in the parking lot, yes.
'Cause I have another concern as far as the kids, um, and traffic. As I drove up tonight, I noticed that the sidewalks are all gravel. I can see a jillion kids in the road, 'cause it's gonna be, you know, they're gonna have flip flops with stones in their flip flops, so kids are gonna be in the road. I just think it's a real dangerous situation.
They're supposed to have the sidewalks done by Thursday.
Yeah, and I'll have, I'll, I'll, I'll be able to confirm tomorrow where we are with the process, and I'll, I can send out the board an email, just letting you know what information we have as far as them being done with those things. It has been an issue over the summer, we've had practices over at Barnard Park, and so we've kinda taken the stance of they all walk masks over there, um, with the coaches, one in front, one in back, because it is a construction zone, and so we have tried
Actually, the coach has actually been stopping traffic.
to work around it. Yeah.
Well, when they cross all the street, they try to get the kids all together, they stop the traffic, they have the kids cross. I was surprised to see the coaches were doing that this summer.
So we have tried to address it, but, um, I can send the board out an email tomorrow as soon as I get more information.
Jenny, is there anything we can do for trying to encourage the kids to use the cross... I don't know if, historically, they haven't been using the crosswalk at that intersection? I think even now, it's more important that they do it.
They have been using, at, at this point, once it's in place, it is going to be easier to use the crosswalk than to take another route. They're gonna have the safe island, or the refugee, refuge in the tour, the island, so you can come halfway across, stop, and then come back to. So those breaks will help the children cross. So I, I think, once it's in place, and they're telling me the middle of the month, it will be complete. That's what I'm thinking.
School starts on Thursday.
I, I know.
And they were supposed to be done before Thursday, but...
And we'll probably have two hundred teenage drivers going through there, which is really a scary thing to me.
Yeah, that'll be completed. Well, thank you, chief. All righty, we're gonna jump down to our standing committee reports, which are gonna go very quick, 'cause we're going back into the school. I have any finance, the next one is on nine, twenty, ten. Do you have a manifest that you need to bring forward tonight?
On the twentieth.
On the twentieth, okay, excellent. Um, you are, you guys are actually starting at the administrative level, working on a preliminary budget schedule. I believe you guys started meeting today to start working ideas for the budget, right?
That's correct.
That one takes care of B. HR, your next meeting is on September thirteenth, two thousand and ten. I don't think you had anything during the summer, did you?
Um, well, actually, we've had quite a few things that have been pushed to, I think, both September and October are already filled. And we're already moving on, what extra ones will be then, getting bumped into November?
Keith?
Yeah.
Um, I know we made sure that our bullying po- policy is up to date with the new legislation, but there was also new legislation on truancy.
Yes.
Is that one...
Yep, we're going to, actually, we met this morning, Brian, Mary, Claire and I, to talk about, there's actually four new policies that we need to bring forward.
Oh, okay.
Um, that are new laws, there's also any one on air quality, bullying, truancy, and I'll lose the, the fourth one, but there's four. Um, and then I'm also, you'll, you'll see on the agenda, we're gonna talk about audio and video on buses, and that's another maybe potential change in policy that we'll bring forward, so those actually may trump your, your first one to move things out, because those are...
Well, yes, I knew there was more coming, and right now, our agendas are kind of in flux.
Yeah, so we're gonna actually be meeting, um, next week, and looking at some recommended policy language for those policies to make it easier, because we'll obviously need to bring them to all three boards for approval, so...
And in the summer, when we were scanning everything to put it on the website, our policies, there was some that we noticed that were probably need to be reviewed and altered and changed, 'cause it's not necessarily what we're doing as a board, so, as we saw those, I mentioned them to Laurie, so she's gonna have a very busy...
Busy fall.
A very busy fall, yes, on that. C and E, next meeting is September thirteenth, uh, seven o'clock, SAU central office. Planning and communication. I'll actually let you go, 'cause we've had some articles in the paper, if you wanna share anything about that.
Well, we've been very busy, we had our first articles in the paper back in June, we've been going bi-weekly since. We have, so last week, last Thursday, we had an article in the paper, and then, of course, not this Thursday, but the following, we'll have one on the new reading program. So we have, we've been quite busy.
And those, all those articles, if you didn't see them, are all now linked to, on our website, under news, on the front page.
And anybody that's looking for our policies, just go under school board, and then you'll see the next link to go to, uh, the policies for the school district. Next meeting for planning and communication will be September ninth, at five thirty PM at the SAU office. And we also scheduled the next one for ten-four. I see it's already on there for six PM here at the GHS. So we'll jump right to superintendent report.
Okay. I'm excited to have the kids back. It's always, it's quiet in the summer, it's a different kinda work, it's a different quiet, but it's always nice when they're here. Um, I feel like all the work that we do over the summer comes to kinda fruition in the school year. Um, it has been a busy summer, we've done lots of, um, school projects that you'll probably see, we've done, um, out here at the high school, we, um, put in some pavers, um, one of the, one of the problems we've had with that area is the kids all stand out there on the grass during the school year when they're waiting for the buses, and so we decided to kinda take that on, and just say, okay, instead of doing that, let's create an area. So we were able to, to put pavers out there, um, and we took some of the benches that are kind of hidden in between, um, in our little inside areas here that don't get used, and we moved them outside, so that creates a nice little sitting area for some of the kids.
Now, my understanding, though, some of that money for that came from the, uh, one of our class, senior classes donating some of the money for that.
Correct.
So I, I did do a little research, and that is where, uh, the money was from.
We completed all of the tile and carpet replacement at Mountain View, so they are totally tiled now, so that was a nice project to finally, it's been a multi-year phase project, and we finally were able to finish that this summer. Um, so the only carpet you'll find now at the, at Mountain View is in the library, and that's been recently replaced, so we're, we're in pretty good shape there. Um, the phone systems, um, we're turning them over tomorrow at ten o'clock, so everything has been installed, up and running, hopefully no kinks, but, um, they're being turned over tomorrow into, onto the new system, so, um, let's see, in Bartlett, we were able to construct a wall in the basement downstairs, um, which was potentially that large kindergarten area that we've now split into two rooms to create two spaces, before we just had kind of a bookshelf in between, um, so one cla- one side has actually become a classroom now, so, um, we were able to get that done this summer. We also, um, abated some tile in the gym at, at Bartlett, um, some of the surrounding tiles around the outside were peeling up, um, they are asbestos tiles, so we had an abatement company come in over the summertime, water abate them, and replace them with newer tile, so, um, we've gone back and forth about replacing the entire gym floor, this was a good solution to get us through until hopefully phase two of the project, um, so it will get us that piece, and it looks much nicer. Another big project we did this summer was installation of new cameras, new video cameras in, um, high school here and at Mountain View. We installed twenty-four cameras at Mountain View, and fifteen more cameras here at the high school, um, so we are able, now able to capture video in pretty much all areas of the schools, which will help us for safety and security reasons, so, um, that was paid through our funds, um, so that was a nice project that we were also able to complete. One of the things we had to do this summer, um, as part of our adequacy aid, we had to complete an adequacy survey, and, and accountability survey for adequacy, um, so as you know, we get adequacy dollars, to, we have to now demonstrate on a yearly basis how we're meeting an adequate education. Um, so we had to go through all of the standards and document how we meet each of those standards for education, and so, um, over the summer, I met with all the principals, we sat down, it was a pretty complex process, um, we had to give them documentation of how we needed it through curriculum, or, um, through the arts, things like that, so, but every school has now submitted theirs, we're just waiting for the Department of Ed to approve them. Goss Town High School got their final fire inspection, if you remember, we were having problems getting it passed, um, due to continuous small issues, so we were finally able, they came in, um, passed us on our inspection, so we went from our conditional approval at the high school to our full approval at the high school. Um, we got that letter, uh, last week, and Maple Avenue and Glen Lake will be up for their program approval this year, so they'll go through that process as well. We did receive some information, um, on inclement weather processes, um, some of you may have read in the papers that Kearsar School District took on, um, kind of a pilot program about how to, um, do school when we have a cancellation, um, it has to be all, it's all online, um, and so the Department of Ed put some, a technical advisory out to, um, superintendents if we wanted to go that direction. The only reason I'm sharing with this, it was a pretty complex process, during our administrative retreat, we talked about it, whether it was something we wanted to take on or not, um, at this point, we decided it wasn't something we were interested in looking at, we have to guarantee that eighty percent of our students have online access, um, and basically, you do an online web class, um, with the students, you have to provide the Department of Ed with documentation of what you're doing, if a student doesn't participate, it's considered an absent day, um, we just thought with all of the things that we have going on, this was not something we felt was that important to try to tackle right now, um, and so, but I did wanna know, let you know that it is an option, and it is something we may look at some point in time, um, but collectively, the administrative team, um,[1730.31] Um, but collectively, the administrative team, um, didn't view it as something that was a priority thing to really, it was going to be a lot of work. Um, and we have the new reading streets, we have a lot going on, that we felt those were higher priorities than trying to figure out what to do on a snow day. I do have the technical advisory, if anybody would like a copy of that. We did meet as an administrative team over the summertime, and we met for four days. Kind of, a lot of the focus was on emergency management. Um, we put all of our administrators through first aid and CPR and A E D training. We also put them all through C P I., which is, um, how to kind of deal with a really difficult or behavioral student, as well as the restraint portion of the training. Um, so if we had students in a fight, or we needed to restrain a child, everybody is now trained, the entire administrative team, um, is now trained in how to do that. I also spent some time, um, talking about our emergency management plan. That's on there, you will see that at your next meeting. Um, Jen Gillis from the middle school has been working with, um, Chief O'Brien, the police chief, uh, the fire chief here in town, on developing, um, a comprehensive emergency management plan that aligns with the incident command system. Um, and it is, it's a pretty comprehensive document, you'll see, get a copy of it in your next board agenda, it's about three hundred pages long. Goes through every incident that we could have. What we, what this will create is a, an SAU-wide emergency management plan. Right now, we have seven plans, one for every building. Each one uses different language, each one has different processes in it, it's set up differently. So if the fire or police department, if we had an emergency in one building, it would be different than in another building. And so what this was trying to do was create a, um, an SAU-wide, and in fact, the Villa is adopting it as well. Um, so that no matter what fire or police department came to our buildings, we would all be using the same language, um, we'd all be using the same terminology, we'd all have the same plan, um, so that there wasn't questions about it. Um, so all of our administrators have been trained, and we've looked at it, we've reviewed it. Um, we actually were required to take three courses, three incident command system courses, as part of this process, and so everybody's done that, so. I think for emergency management, we are ready. We also spent some time, um, doing bullying and talking about bullying and the law, and how we're changing that and revising it. Does it got a list here? Um, looking to schedule, just put it on your calendar, October twelfth, an SAU board meeting, um, and I'm gonna send out superintendent's notes for the summer. It'll be a comprehensive look tomorrow, and there'll be a note on the top, just reminding people to let Denise know if you think you can make that day. Um, that will be where we'll talk about the SAU budget. We did receive, um, if you recall, we, um, had a grievance filed at Mountain View Middle School last year over, um, the administrative, administration's decision to put a fourth person on at recess. Um, it was heard by the arbitrator, went all the way to arbitration, it was heard by the arbitrator over the summer, at the end of the school year. We received the results over the summer, and the arbitrator found in favor of the administration, um, that there was nothing in the contract that says we can't do that, and that we absolutely have the right to do that. So I do have that result, if any of the board members would like a copy of that, to let me know, I can certainly scan it and send it to you. Um, just as an information point, um, that grievance cost nine thousand four hundred and five dollars.
And legal fees for the school district.
Illegal fees for the school district, just so you have an idea of the cost of that.
Did, um, did it require live testimony by any of the school district?
Yes, we had, um, uh, Mr. Hunt testified, and several teachers testified on behalf of the...
So, the, the real cost is probably closer to ten or eleven thousand.
Correct, the, those were just the illegal fees.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Um, two weeks ago, Carol Commissar and I went to a negotiations conference, um, it was a two-day conference, we got some great information, um, on negotiating practices. We got some wonderful information on the new update of healthcare, um, the federal healthcare law, and what that may mean to us in contracts. So, um, over the next couple of days, I'm gonna work to put a summary together for board members, so, um, look for that. I'll send it out as attachment, probably to my next week's superintendent's notes, kind of just some hints. And, um, we'll be negotiating three contracts within the three districts, so it was kind of timely. Um, each district has one contract next year. We've been working with the bus contract, um, it's just an update, things that we believe are ready to go on Thursday. We had some last-minute little things we've solved, but, um, we did meet with the bus company at the beginning of July, at the beginning of August, um, Ray and I, to go over the contract, make sure everything was being met. Um, and it is, in fact, we'll talk a little bit about it later, but, um, they installed new cameras in all of the buses. The cameras are able to audio and video, um, and so they're requesting if we, our policy only allows for video, if we want to audio, we actually have a, have a public hearing on it, so we'll talk about that later, but, um, that's something to think about, so they did provide the ability to do audio as well. The board had asked at the end of the year, we knew that the, um, new housing was gonna be open over by Bartlett. Um, so as of today, we have, the impact that has had on us is we've had four students enroll at Bartlett, one at Mountain View, and one at the high school. Um, the four students at Bartlett, three were first graders, one was a fourth grader, Mountain View was an eighth grader, and the high school was a tenth grader. So that's what we've had so far. Let's see. We've been busy fingerprinting, um, I don't have the exact numbers, but I would say it's over a hundred people that we have fingerprinted over the summertime. Um, again, I'll put that, those numbers in your superintendent's notes, that should go out tomorrow, so you can see that. Um, Carol was adding them up, and I've asked her to define what schools they all came from, so we can identify where the most fingerprints were coming from. And the last thing is, um, the state came, they have the right to come in and inspect all our underground tanks, um, so they requested an inspection, and so they came in and inspected all of our tanks. Um, we passed with flying colors, the only thing they have asked us to do is, um, to do a tight, tank tightness test at Maple Ave. Um, it's the same test we just did at Mountain View, it's a couple hundred dollars, um, but because of the age of the tank, they wanna just ensure that it is still, um, everything else passed. Um, but they weren't able to get the cathodes out of the container, uh, and in my language, that's what it means. Um, they weren't able to get it, so they couldn't test the tightness, so they just asked us to bring somebody in and do that. So, um, Jerry's gonna follow up with that, but other than that, all of the tests passed with flying colors, so we are all set. And, that's all, it's a lot.
Alrighty, um, before we broke for the summer, we, uh, had authorized the administration to move forward with the, uh, reissuance of the refunding bond, and we had our public hearing on July nineteenth. What we need tonight, and I'll let Ray do a few summaries of it, we need a motion tonight to authorize the, uh, administration, specifically, I believe Stacy and Ray, to sign the, um, the reissuing of the bonds. But I'll let Ray give a little bit of highlights, updates that occurred over the summer on it.
Okay, in essence, with, um, the handouts that you have this evening are copies of the formal resolution, of the board resolution to authorize us to actually go ahead and issue the refunding bonds for the school district. As you go through it, uh, and as you sift through the where-ases and be-it resolves, uh, the highlights in here are setting a minimum level of savings, which is three percent of net present value. That's the number, you'll recall, from our meeting back in June twenty-first, and it would have netted the school district approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars' worth of savings. At the time, we were looking at just over two hundred thousand. Rates as of today, uh, will present in excess of four hundred thousand dollars' worth of debt savings for the school district. So, we wanna move quickly on this, uh, after we have our, you know, the res- your resolution authorized this evening. Uh, and as Keith had indicated, the other major point here is for the board to assign signatory responsibilities to the superintendent and to the business administrator, to act either jointly or singly to take care of the bond purchase agreement and any other contractual documents that might come up with respect to agency representation and the like. Again, the intent is to keep the wheels moving on this as we go forward.
And the board ultimately will need to sign the bond, and so you folks will need to sign the bond.
Along with your district treasurer, yep. So there are no major changes from the presentations that were provided to you over the summer, uh, both during the June meeting and during the public hearing.
So Ray, would a, a motion to approve the resolution as provided be appropriate?
That's, that's the motion, right. And your recording secretary does have a copy of the resolution to, uh, for insertion into the record.
Jenny, you got a question?
Um, just to clarify for anyone listening, that four hundred thousand dollars savings is over the next, like, ten years of the bond.
Ten years, that's correct.
It's not something that we're going to get this budget year, four hundred thousand dollars back.
That's actually a net savings after we pay the fees and everything, associated with finance.
That's right.
But it's over.
It'll be over a ten, the, the remaining ten-year period, average forty thousand dollars a year in de- in interest savings, yep.
Have the interest rates moved since our last hearing?
Uh, they, uh, they did go up a bit over the summer, and on Friday, there was a dip in the bond market. Speaking with our representatives today, our savings are still projected to be in excess of four hundred thousand dollars.
Do I have a motion? By Jenny?
A second.
Saying it by Kent. All in favor of authorization, the reissuance of the refinancing bond, and having a superintendent and, um, business manager act, joining you individually, um, to sign the paperwork, and what was the other, what was the wording you used? For which you need to be able to sign?
Uh, contractual documents and bond purchase agreement, yep.
What's the benefit of being able to act individually? Why would you not want to have both of you?
See, one's on vacation, the work has to get signed that week.
Yeah, if I'm out, then Ray can sign for it. Or freeze out, I can sign for. It only needs one signature, for the most part.
And then, obviously, the final bond actually has to be signed by the entire board. Which will probably be at our September meeting. Alright, any other questions on it? All in favor of the motion? Uh, that passage unanimously, eight zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna jump past change of school assignments and the tuition attendance request, and we're right, and we're gonna go back to those in non-public. Uh, field trip request?
We have a request from Jess Brown, um, varsity field hockey coach, to take the field hockey team to College of Holy Cross to watch a division-one game this fall. Um, let's see, it's on September fifth, and this is a repeat trip. Um, the nice thing, just to point out, is that Lindsay McPhail, who was a two thousand and ten graduate, will be playing on the team this year. So they're actually, see a real-life graduate play.
No, barring, you don't need a motion, unless somebody wants to prevent it from occurring, then they have to make a motion. Okay? Um, two thousand and ten, eleven budget season's coming upon us. Um, I felt that, you know, we're, we have a request from the budget committee to cut our budget by ten percent. Um, I think it's a very challenging number to try to meet. Um, I think one of the things that we need to look at, if we're gonna try to meet that, is to possibly renegotiate and maybe ask the G E A. not to take raises this year as contractually obligated under their contract. Um, it would be totally voluntary on their part, we did send a letter late in the season last year, uh, asking them to consider that. I thought it'd be prudent that we do it again this year, that we ask them to seriously consider it. Um, we're not sending one to G E S S., because their contract actually expires, and we'll be renegotiating with them, uh, starting, we're probably gonna start, what, in the late fall?
Um, your, the contract, actually, I had, it's on the agenda, but the contract says by September fifteenth, you'll have your first meeting, so...
On that, Jenny?
Um, if I remember correctly, in reading my minutes from the, that we approved, that we, um, voted on a recommendation that we were not going to, um, move our budget to a ten percent cutoff, we were going to, to...
We were gonna level...
Responsibly do our budget and see what it turned out to be.
Correct. Yeah, we asked zero line budgeting, right, we did not, I mean, but obviously, you know, the budget committee wants to see us try to do that as a goal. I, I think to get anywhere near that goal, that would be one of the things we'd have to look at.
I would be against that, absolutely. I don't think that our economy is ever going to get any better if we keep cutting from the little guy, you know? Teachers have responsibilities the same way as every other taxpayer does, and they have to pay their taxes as well as everybody else. And they may be in the position of a spouse that's out of work, um, you know, they still have bills, they have everything. We, in good faith, negotiated that contract, I think that we should stick with it. We don't give them bonuses in years that, you know, that are very good, I don't think we should be taking away from them in years that they're not.
The only thing is, we, the only caveat I'm gonna share, that if we get a worst-case scenario out of our budget committee, um, they cut our budget by ten percent. At deliberative session, the law prevents us from adding or subtracting more than ten percent from the recommended budget from the budget committee. So we could potentially end up with a budget that's level-funded from this year, potentially, which would mean we would have to make significant cuts in our staffing. Um, so that, I mean, that's the only caveat, if, if, if the raises are not passed, are not given up, and we end up with a very low budget coming out of deliberative session, and the two numbers that are on the ballot is a level-funded budget from this year and the default budget, and we don't get our default budget, the lower number passes, that, I mean, that's, that's the unfortunate reality of potentially happening.
I think we have to do our homework and make sure we educate the public as to what they're voting for, and what could that mean. Our teachers are middle of the line as far as their, um, salaries go. They can, we can lose good teachers to any community, a ride, you know, a ride away from, in any direction, and they can get five thousand dollars a year more. Um, you know, so I think that's something that we have to make sure everyone understands, that we're not a high-end community as far as our salaries go. Um, and these people are in the same boat as everybody else.
Sure.
Um, just a couple of things, and I agree with Jenny, um, these may not be the best of times, but in the very good times, nobody out there said, oh, well, it's good times, let's give them a little extra. I'm, I'm a big believer, in you negotiate a contract, you stick with it. And my other concern is, that ten percent is just a starting point for the budget committee.
Mm-hmm.
I would not bet a penny that you're gonna come in at only a ten percent reduction, because it was clearly a starting point. Because there are still gonna be things that they don't like that they'll pick up.
True.
So...
But I thought we, as a board, need to have this discussion, and do early on, as to what we want to do on this, so...
And, and you know...
I was only being proactive, thinking about it beforehand.
I, I would say, I don't think we have anything to lose by asking the G E A. to consider, if not an elimination, maybe a reduction in, in the compen- you know, the increased compensation. Do I like that idea? I don't like it, but I'm also a realist. In these times, you have to make every effort. How much are we willing to give up in order to fully fund increases?
But, it seems to me that, um, regardless of whether you're talking about, um, a zero change versus a ten percent change, um, the impact is pretty much the same, given increasing costs. So... I mean, al- ultimately, um, the district is faced with the same kinds of decisions.
Absolutely. So, does anybody wanna make a motion from the floor? Once again, I'll ask any motions? Barring a motion, we're gonna move on to the next subject matter, the area agreement discussion.
Um, last December, we had an area agreement meeting, I believe, actually, we may have had two, um, with Dunbar and New Boston. Just looking to clarify some language, um, in the area agreement regarding the tuition rate, in the past, we've been, when we bill Dunbar and New Boston for their tuition, we've been using the superintendent's budget, which, um, for the past couple of years, has been very different than the approved budget. And so what that has done has been, um, Dunbar and New Boston, for their first two payments, have been elevated, and then their third payment is a smaller payment. Um, and so they requested the consideration for all three boards to clarify that language. Um, there's probably some more.
Are there any left on that side, for the pass out?
Yeah, but we can share here.
So the, um, the three boards at their, um, last area agreement meeting discussed putting together some clarification language that we would use the approved budget for tuition billing, so that it was a little bit more even, and I'm a little bit more on an accurate, um, pace. Um, and that we would use, we would continue to use the superintendent's budget for budgeting purposes. So we will, once we do our Gothstown budget, we will use that number, the superintendent's number, to give them to estimate their tuition rates. But once we did the billing for the following year, we would actually use the approved budget. And so Kevin Colamore, um, board member from Dunbar, drew up this information, um, so I'd like the board to review it. You'll see it again on your, um, September twentieth agenda, um, looking for confirmation or approval on this. If the board agrees, what we would be looking for is all three boards to agree to it, and then at our area agreement, we can confirm that all three boards agreed to it, and it will become kind of a clarification document as far as the area agreement goes. That was what the, the group at that area agreement meeting discussed. So, it's been a while, but for those of you who were there, is anything else anybody wanted to add?
E M S twenty-five and the D O E twenty-five is available for signing. What we'll do is, when we end the meeting, and just before we go to non-public, Ray, you'll have them out, if any of you have time.
They're all set up now.
They're all set up? So make sure you please sign each document in the same spot on each one, and using a blue pen, I believe, is what they require.
That's right.
And they're over there, so, we will do that as soon as we break from the meeting and go into non-public, we'll take a minute and do that. Crispin House agreement.
I'm just looking for authorization to enter into the agreement with Crispin's... I'm just looking for authorization to enter into the agreement with Crispin's house, who does our after-school program at Mountain View Middle School.
Have they made any changes to what they want to offer?
Nope, everything's the same.
Do I have a motion by Jenny, seconded by Jennifer? Any questions? All in favor of the motion? That passes unanimously, eight zero zero. Negotiations. We have to start negotiating with GESS by September fifteenth. That's to be our first meeting.
By, yeah, by contract. I have not received a letter from them to enter into negotiations. I didn't know if, I didn't bring my committee assignments with me, who's on the negotiations committee. If after this meeting, if you wanted to get me a date or two, I could perhaps touch base with them and see, try to get that ball rolling. So just whoever thinks they're negotiating can touch base with me, and we can pick some dates.
Well, if you know, but I'm looking for the file to see what it is. Audio and video on buses?
As I said earlier, the the bus company, when they replaced all of the videos on the camp, on the buses, if you recall, our contract before was we had the ability to videotape on all buses. Our new contract required videos on all buses. We have to put signs up, which we're do, we're in the, they're in the process of doing. The equipment that they bought also allows for audiotape. At this point, I've told them, only start with video, because that's all our policy allows for. If we want to audiotape based on RSA, actually, chapter five seventy A of the wiretapping and eavesdropping laws, if we're going to do that on a school bus, we have to have, hold a public hearing to authorize that. So I guess I'm looking for board feedback on whether, and I'm bringing this to all three boards, whether you would like to have audiotape on the buses as well as videotape, and if so, would you want to schedule a public hearing for that before your next, or at the beginning of your next board meeting? It is something that I think could be very valuable and helpful when we're looking at discipline issues or such type as more verbal kind of banter versus the physical. We can, when we videotape, we can see a fight, but we can't pick up the audio if a kid is picking on another student. And so as an administrative team at the SAU, we have talked about this, and it is something I think we recommend, because I think it will be helpful as we look at bullying, as we look at all of these issues, and try to determine who did what. There's actually three video cameras on the buses now in three locations, so we should be able to get most of the buses.
And does the audio, is it connected to each camera, so you pick up different audio segments?
Yeah, correct.
I just think when you have to make a decision about a problem on the bus, the more information you have, the better you are, better off you are, and a better decision hopefully will come out of it. So being able to hear what's going on as well as see what's going on, it's gotta be a plus.
So it's the consensus that we want to hold a public hearing on the matter, and then.
Yeah, see what the public wants.
You wanna hold it ready at seven o'clock on September twentieth?
On the next meeting.
Jenny?
Have the parents been notified that there's mandatory videotaping on all the buses for this year?
In our policies, it states that we have
Have video.
We have video on the buses.
Yeah, it says video cameras may be used on school buses to monitor student behavior. Audio recordings in conjunction with video recordings may also be captured in accordance with provisions of RSA five seventy A, which is what requires us to then have a public hearing. We'd have to revise our policy as well, which is another policy. So we would be looking to bring back, and that's why I'm bringing you today, with the hope that if we, if we brought it to HR on the thirteenth, we could bring, we could do the public hearing, look at the policy at the same time, because we would need to revise, have everything in place before we could actually audiotape.
So we'll do a public hearing right at seven o'clock?
Agreed.
From seven o'clock to seven ten?
On twentieth September.
Twentieth of September, yes. That's our next board meeting.
Can I just ask in a side question?
Sure.
Since we're talking about videotaping, the videotaping in the buildings is just video, correct?
Correct. It's just video.
Because I've been asked that by a couple people.
Yeah, it is just strictly video, and we're now.
And you can't hear the secrets you're sharing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The test scores won't be revealed.
Yeah, it is certainly just video, and just so you know, we have bought signs. Jerry's in the process of buying signs for all of the buildings that will post on the front doors, windows, letting people know that they are being video. There is video surveillance in all of our buildings.
These new camera systems also have the capability of monitoring traffic on the outside of a bus. So if you do have cars that are passing, stop buses and the like, you'll be able to capture that kind of data too.
Snazzy, yeah, the buses.
So you'll keep passing the buses when the stoplights are on. Don't do it in our town anymore.
Yeah.
Excellent. Parent, excuse me, parent survey information?
In my, in my role as the superintendent, my continued efforts to get feedback and opinions and thoughts. I got with the, this was another thing we worked on at our administrative retreat, was trying to get parent opinions on how we're doing as a school district. And so this survey is going out to every parent. If you have a high schooler, you likely already got it, because they sent them home in the, in the grizz that just went out. And we actually have already received several of them at the SAU, so we are getting them at the elementary schools. They're going out in the first day packets. Our hope was that while parents are filling out all the paperwork, they'll fill that right out as well. It is pretty comprehensive. It does go along the lines with NEAS and C standards, which was another reason we were looking to do it, was to align and get feedback for NEAS and C for the high school, which will be coming up in a couple of years, and so we're always looking for that feedback. It's a lot of questions. The first section is on educational community, kind of what you see in our buildings, how are things going? Communication, how are things going back and forth, how's our website, those kind of informations. Curriculum and instruction, looking at what we offer, what we do instructionally. Leadership and organization, ask about the superintendent, ask about the principal, and it asks about the school board. So you know, there is a question on there, just looking for that. And then school philosophy and goals, looking at our mission and vision statement, and whether students and parents understand why we do things and our purpose for doing them. So we'll be collating all of that data. I have given that charge to Denise, because we could get, I don't know, two thousand surveys back. We were able to also break it down. We put on there what residence you're from. We thought that was also good feedback for Dunbar and New Boston, to be able to get parent opinions from those towns as to how they're debut Mountain View and the high school. So it should be a pretty good survey.
Stacy, is it available online as well?
It is not at this point. Eventually, we would like to go there. Just doing it with like Survey Monkey, there's no way to limit how many times somebody was, went in to do it. And so until we're really comfortable with the process and everybody got it, we thought we would get a better turnout by doing it by hand and sending it home with students versus go online and do it. Eventually, I'd love to do it, because it will be much easier to collate the data. But for the first year, we thought giving it hand, it would be mean much more to a parent if they had it in their actual hand versus having to go somewhere to fill it out.
And do we have it labeled somewhere else so the kiddos who might not make it see it somewhere that there is one?
No, in the sense of, well, every parent should look.
Well, the first day packet is something every parent should anticipate.
Yeah, so it'll go home with all the forms you have to fill out, everything that comes back that next day.
Okay.
Parents could, just for the public, parents could always call and get another copy. There's, I, there was a cover letter that went home with it, just explaining why we were doing it, how to return it. We put on multiple different places. You can return it with, to the classroom teacher, to the main office. You can mail it to the main office. You could drop it off at the SAU. You can mail it to the SAU, because we felt that we didn't want to just tell a parent to return it to a teacher. If they didn't want the teacher to see it, they wanted to re- return it. It's all anonymous, so people don't have to put their names on them, so. Look at some, so you'll see that data, depending on how many we get and how long it takes us to collate. Hopefully next month.
You're asking for permission to continue to hire until September twentieth because of the fact that we have several teaching positions that are not filled at the current moment, I believe?
Correct. We have three positions. We have two special ed positions and the middle school administrative position. Still open, so I'm looking for permission to hire until our next board meeting. So I know they've been interviewing for the special ed positions.
Sue made the motion. Philip seconded it. Any questions or discussions? All in favor of the motion? That passes unanimously, eight zero zero.
And then in non-public, if we can talk about the administrative position.
We will talk about the administrative position in non-public, yes. We also need to have a motion to accept the resignation of Travis Garrett as Mountain View Middle School's assistant principal. As you noticed during the summer, I sent out an email saying that I felt it was necessary that we accept his resignation and that we'd have to make a formal motion to accept it at tonight's board meeting. So Philip made that motion. Do I have a second to it? Jenny, anybody have any questions or discussions on that? Travis did get a wonderful opportunity for a principalship back in his home state in a very nice community. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for him. We wish him the best on that. All in favor of the motion of accepting that resignation? Jenny, you're in favor, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. I closed unanimously, eight zero zero. Thank you. And then we have a list of other ones for confirmations. There's no more resignations, these are all confirmations, right?
No, we have no more, right. Well, there is actually three for teachers, but we can go down just by order. So we have several teacher nomination confirmations. Aspasia Cody for world language at the middle school, Janelle Daniels for special ed at Bartlett, Jennifer Franz, who will be our new school nurse at the, at Mountain View. Amber Rainey will be eighth grade science. That will be a one-year position for a leave of absence. Julie Shaughnessy for literacy at the middle school, and Marjorie Wainwright for biology at the high school. I, the board authorized me to hire them, so I've hired them, so we're just looking for confirmation of those nominations.
Made by Philip, seconded by Jennifer. All in favor of the motion? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Which is good, because your contracts have been signed.
I'm looking for three confirmations of resignations. The resignation of Casey Brunden Deal from, in special ed, from Bartlett. Maricel Napsis in biology from the high school, and Melissa Romaine, special ed at the middle school. And for those who don't know, Melissa Romaine accepted an administrative position in Dunbar and, a special ed facilitator. Karen Kulik, who was the facilitator there, has left, and so Melissa applied for the job and was a good candidate, so.
Motion to accept the resignations by Jen, by Sue, seconded by Diane. All in favor of the motion? Eight zero zero, motion passes.
We have just a one-year leave of absence request, Rebecca Boland, who is an eighth-grade science teacher, which yields the above. Amber Rainey is filling her one-year position.
I have a motion to accept the, to provide for a one-year leave of absence. By Jennifer, seconded by Philip. All in favor of the motion? That passes unanimously, eight zero zero.
As you can see, we have four track change confirmations that'll be effective in the first K period. Karen Bowden Gurley is moving from bachelor's fifteen to her masters. Stephanie Burns from bachelor's thirty to masters. Sarah Button from bachelor's fifteen to masters, and Jennifer Franz from bachelor's to bachelor's plus fifteen.
That's just notification.
Yep. Um, we have two student.
Would you, you will send notes to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we have two student teachers this year, from September to December. At Mountain View, we'll have Shannon Larson, who will be doing seventh grade science, and Nicole St. Pierre, who will be here at the high school doing art. And then we have multiple, two pages of confr, of nominations for athletics and co-curricular nominations.
And any new folk?
I'll be honest with you, I didn't go through them, although I'm looking at the non-sports, and they all, they're all staffed, so I'm guessing they're all the same. I do know, um.
Yes, Cecile.
Oh, student ca, student council is new, um, correct, is that, I think we had a change in student council advisors from last year.
See, Cecile decided to stay on for yearbook, eh?
Yep.
If you want, we'll actually, do you wanna do them all as one motion?
Yeah, you can do that, and we'll just put them in the minutes as.
And anybody have any questions? We'll give you a moment to just run down through them. We'll put all the names in the record. So, okay, made by Philip, seconded by by Kent, excuse me. All in favor of the motion? Passed unanimously, eight zero zero. All righty. Trying to use student absence. All right, we are actually gonna go into non-public for two different reasons. One, student matters, and the other one is the hiring of public employees. Those are the two reasons, under RSA, RSA ninety-one dash A, seven four three two C. I have a motion to go into non-public for those two reasons, by Kent, seconded by Philip. Actually, I do a head roll call to go into it. Yes, 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 yes. Philip? We are officially in non-public.